Hello, thank you for choosing to spend your time with us here tonight. My hope is that we will learn a little bit about politics, a little bit about the process, and to enjoy it. My name is Dan Boskeljohn. I have lived in Iowa City for the past 20 years. I have known the space as an inhabitant of overpriced campus apartments for undergraduates. I have been a captain of coed sports teams, graduate student, a jogger, and a parent of a child who is going through the public school systems. I've lived on the east side, I've done the west side and the south side. I'm fairly tall, you might have seen me around town. I write for Little Village, write for Stages, I've worked with Dave Gould on The Green Room. And part of why Coffee with Dan has started was because Dave really wanted to expand the space for community that The Green Room had spun off with in terms of the college and the university. So what this Coffee with Dan is doing is helping just to create a space for the kind of world that I want to live in, which is a world that's warm and it's joyful and inspires everybody to live well in community with others. It's framed toward engaged inquiry rather than productive certainty and an eye for improving the actual conditions of the spaces that we traverse every day rather than just talking about it incessantly. So this is the first Coffee with Dan. I will be hosting a few more throughout the fall. There will be two in October. One will be tied to the Iowa City Book Festival and the other will be anchored in terms of Witching Hour, so you can see more of me then. My hope overall is that the series will create the space for a community of people who share my value of living well with others and my interest in exploring difficult questions in respectful and empowering ways. In short, my hope is to create the space for a thoughtful community, one that is intellectually curious as well as compassionately inclined. So you're part of the first batch of people to do this. So tonight, we are in a conversation with the candidates for the Iowa City City Special Election, who are at present competing in runoff elections that will narrow the ballot from five to two names. Here are the five present before you: Anne Freerks, Ryan Hall, Christine Ralston, Bruce Teague, and Brianna Wills. What makes this election somewhat rare is that the five people assembled before you actually seem to want to operate as civil servants, to behave civilly and to serve the public. And even though each possesses a different vision and a different set of skills and a different capacity for strength, these differences, I hope, will avoid the kind of polarization that is typified in our national politics. So it's a really cool, I think, chance to get to see politics as it should work, not the way that it so often seems to. So my hope tonight is that our conversation will lend itself toward thinking of politics in terms of vision and character rather than one of issues. By character, what I mean is the habits and the contingent circumstances that shape who each one of us becomes. By vision, I mean the values that inform what particular good things are the most important to emphasize when thinking about the future of Iowa City. Both character and vision are important because even when the visions are similar, each distinct character affects how candidates would translate that vision into reality. So that's my background and that's part of how I'm shaping tonight's conversation. Overall, the conversation will be a little different from typical political forums. I will start out by having a brief 10-minute conversation with each candidate and go over questions of character, vision, and value. Next, I've asked each candidate to bring two questions to ask you. So after the first hour where you get to know them, the second hour will be spent with them asking questions of you, so they've come prepared for that. During that time, if you have an answer to that question, you can come up and I will give you the microphone and you can give your answer to that question. If you want to think about the question a little bit longer, that's totally fine. There's a sign-up sheet in the back corner for Coffee with Dan. You can put your name and your email address down and send me your answer and I will forward that on to the candidates at large. And then the last few minutes will bring things to a close, including suggestions on how to follow up on tonight. Does that make sense to everybody? Everybody clear on the format? All right. So just take just a moment before we begin. There's a small thought experiment to frame what I want, what I hope that we can experience. Just consider for the next two hours that we live in a world where politics is the pursuit of the good rather than a pursuit of profit. Consider that conflicts emerge through a choice of what is better or perhaps what is best and not a conflict of right or wrong. Imagine that you're inhabitants of an ideal community and not an ideal world, one that's constituted by care rather than chaos. Let go of cynicism for just two hours and listen to the vision of good people who work hard and who have entered politics based on a desire to serve rather than a desire to control. Can I have two hours of your time in that way?
Yes, absolutely.
Fantastic, and yours as well?
Absolutely.
Please, yes.
All right, great. So here are our candidates. Anne Freerks, and I'm just going alphabetically, there's no special one way or the other other than just the vagaries of our alphabet. So Anne. Anne has called Iowa City home for the past 33 years. Her commitment to neighborhoods and community began with her work as the president of the Longfellow Neighborhood Association and then as the PTA president for Longfellow, which led to her work with the Iowa City Historic Preservation Commission. She helped to create the state's first conservation district, and that's a model that's drawn interest from around the country, as far away as Pittsburgh. She's also served in the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission, frequently as the chair, and works as the creative coordinator in the Office of Strategic Communication at the University of Iowa. Everybody give her a hand? Thank you for coming. Ryan Hall. Ryan is an environmental planning major and a gender and women's sexuality studies minor with a certificate in sustainability. They are currently a senior who took three gap years doing AmeriCorps, serving in Columbus, Ohio as a tutor and a mentor, a wildland firefighter in Colorado, and a home energy auditor in Decorah. Originally from suburban Detroit, they chose to attend the University of Iowa for in-state tuition and to attend a Big Ten university. They're gender queer, pansexual, a drag queen, king and queen, a dancer, a slam poet, a karaokeer, a food and housing co-op member, and part of the Iowa City Board of Adjustment. They've worked in food service on and off for the last 10 years, and they're committed to the wonderful prairie state of Iowa. Give Ryan a hand. Christine Ralston. Christine is a former policy analyst at the nonprofit, nonpartisan Iowa Policy Project, where much of her research is focused on employment, state budget, and tax issues. She previously served as vice chair of the Generation Iowa Commission and is a member of the Iowa City Housing and Community Development Commission. A graduate of the University of Iowa School of Urban and Regional Planning, the College of Law, and the School of Music, Ralston is a 10-year resident of Iowa City's east side and has spent nearly 20 years living in the Iowa City area. Bruce Teague. Bruce arrived in Iowa City from Chicago 25 years ago and graduated from Iowa City West High School in 1994. He's worked a variety of jobs in the area, including Hy-Vee, Hardee's, Payless, and is a nurse's aide at Oak Knoll, Mercy Hospital, and Iowa City Hospice. He's been a recipient of food stamps and he's lived in Section 8 housing. In addition to West High, he attended Kirkwood Community College and the University of Iowa. He's also created and developed businesses that serve the community and currently employs 83 people, including caring hands and charm homes, and has had a sustained focus on affordable housing in the community. In addition, he's been involved in a number of commissions and committees in Iowa City and Johnson County. Thank you for being here. And last, only alphabetically, is Brianna Wills. Brianna is the executive director of Old Brick, a nonprofit community center in downtown Iowa City. She's been deeply involved in the community through professional and nonprofit work since moving here almost eight years ago. She has four children and spends significant time working within our school district, lobbying in Des Moines for school funding, and serving as a substitute teacher. Brianna follows policy discussions across our city and state and actively participates in moving progressive causes forward. So, welcome Brianna. All right, let our conversation commence. This isn't quite as cozy as one might hope, but...
Yeah, it's the lights, I think.
It's the lights?
Yeah.
Okay, there's no couch, there's lights. All right. So Anne.
Yes.
How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good. What kind of kombucha are you drinking?
Grape.
Grape?
Chia, yes.
All right. Do you want to move your mic a little bit closer?
Yeah.
There you go.
That's good, all right.
So what are the two values that you would find most central to your core identity? If you were to strip everything else away and out of you, what two values really shine out and direct who you are?
Well, that's a tough question.
I started with the easy one, how are you?
I know, I mean, I could just say...
What kind of kombucha?
I could say two words and be done with this, but I don't feel that that's adequate, so I'm going to try to delve in a little deeper. You know, for me, I guess, values for me, they come from family first and then filter from the community. And, you know, my mom was the oldest of 10, I was the oldest grandchild. We had big family gatherings and would get together once a month and, you know, we learned to kind of communicate. There was, you know, it was just a loving family environment. My father died in Vietnam when I was an infant and we moved in with family. And I think, you know, from tragedy comes good things, though, because it was an embracement by the community and family. It just kind of strengthened it, I think. And so I would have to say compassion and commitment, because those two things, I think, have been key to everything that kind of outlines and everything else throws from it, so.
How would you define commitment?
That's not one of my questions. Commitment, well, you know, you have a, you feel a strong urge to see something through and to make sure that it's done well and to, you know, your satisfaction and to make sure that, you know, it's solid. You have a commitment, you have a complete buy-in for something. And, you know, I see that with community, so I have commitment and compassion. That's what I got for you.
So you gave a little bit of your family background, but is there a time in your life or a moment or some sort of point where you feel like...
Right.
Those two values really were...
Question two.
Yeah, you know.
No, it's okay.
Were those values really shown forth in a way that everybody here can see?
Well, I think as far as in this community, for me, that probably started about 20 years ago. And there was a phone call, we had our first home, there was a phone call I received from someone said, "Your neighborhood is changing, you might want to sell your house." And for me, it didn't really take too long to decide that that wasn't really an option. And I, what they wanted to do was buy up large swaths of all of the land there. It had already kind of started, I didn't know it, you know, I was naive about it, and put in large-scale multifamily housing that was really out of character with no amenities for anyone at all. And it would forever change the character of that area. And I think you can see some of what's happened that way, maybe on Johnson Street and such. And I think, you know, for their, from there, you know, I tried to gather people, I tried to gather support. There was, you know, getting the newspapers or the TV involved was difficult. Finally, Icon was interested. They took a walk around the neighborhood with me and they wrote a short article, and that's what kind of started the ball rolling. And from there, you know, the community as a whole just came together, and it was really one of the most wonderful things that I have experienced. And, you know, I just, the people wrote notes and emails about the sense of place and their love for Iowa City, and I still keep a few of those and I look at them when, you know, I have a difficult time and I think this is why, this is motivation, this is why I do something. And the fact that enough people cared to try to create positive change and to maintain a place that's really special, I think, for all of Iowa City was the beginning of that for me. I mean, you know, my garage was spray painted, my house was broken into, it was a really tough time. Things got really ugly in a lot of ways, but, you know, I guess, part of it too, people from other areas, Dodge Street, wanted to come in on the project, people there wanted to be a part of it. And in the end, we couldn't, you know, you have to make choices and things couldn't be done, but in, the community came together, the city council. And it was difficult, but it was kind of like going through a battle or something and feeling this great reward and relief in the end. But I never really thought it was for me, it was more, I really felt it was for everybody. It had this bigger feeling about it. And so commitment and compassion, I think, are a part of that. And from there, it kind of led to all the other things that I did, you know, which you've listed off, so.
Yeah. So, I mean, going into that sense of really localized in particular sensitivity to a space and the need to really defend that place, how do you, how do you think that that translates to your vision for Iowa City as a whole?
Well, everything's connected. I mean, I've seen that it's always a trickling effect and it's, you know, I realized it wasn't just about my neighborhood. All neighborhoods are important to someone, and that's why I took it a step further and got more involved. And, you know, I think long-term, sustainable, healthy neighborhoods for everyone are important. And there are pockets of special places for everyone, and that's what makes this whole community that's wonderful. And so, you know, I don't know if that answers your question a little bit, but repeat it if you want.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I could just pitch it a slightly different direction. Like, I think you gave a really good sense of what your neighborhood meant to you as a place, as a special place that needed to be preserved. What characteristics of Iowa City do you see really working to preserve as part of city council?
What characteristics of Iowa City do I see? I mean, anything that, anything that works, that were, is, is a positive, we all see, it's all good. I don't think there's any bad school, I don't think there's really any bad neighborhood. You know, I just think there are things that change, though, over time. I know we've talked about height and some of those types of things, and if we find that something isn't working, I think we need to take a moment, look at it, and maybe re-envision it if it's not what we think it should be, so, I don't know.
Is there any one, one thing in particular that you really think should be different as part of your vision?
All these questions were not on my list.
This is kind of question four-ish.
Is there any one thing, what, I'm sorry?
Is there any one thing in particular that you'd like to see Iowa City have as part of your ideal vision? This is just question four. It's there.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Well, I think, you know, healthy, connected, vibrant neighborhoods are important, so maybe we nurture things that make us unique, and those pieces, places and pieces are pockets everywhere. It could be Deluxe Bakery, John's Grocery, something like that, little libraries, pocket parks, you know, maybe it's a park or something like that, a theater, a garden, or a person that waves at you all the time or something like that. So it seems like, in a way, we can embrace the new as well without having fear. Our community's always changing, and our diversity includes all the people that live here and the values that they have. So I was thinking about this, like, how do we promote value as a whole and showcase all of these pieces? And we don't often know about all of these wonderful spots, so maybe there's a way in our community that we can find a way to celebrate and promote all of the pieces to have a better look at the whole. And I think that with that knowledge, people can embrace the whole community a little bit better, you know? I don't know, that seems maybe trivial to some, but I think, you know, knowledge is a part of it and understanding. And so when we see and we know, we can appreciate and understand. So just being aware of all the beautiful places, you know, the South Side, true blood, we've done a wonderful job with that. But there are so many things even just on the south side that are really kind of, you know, unused and these quiet gems. And so making everybody aware of that in some way, I think, promotes that sense of community, neighborhood, and value that we can all support.
Yeah.
I don't know if that makes sense to you.
It totally makes sense. And there's one last question. This would be question five, so we're not going too off-script.
It's been a long day already, so...
I appreciate you being here at the end of it. So you talked about what makes like a place unique. What unique part of you will really help to give that kind of knowledge?
Right.
What's the most unique part of you as a candidate that will really bring that into being?
Well, I think I've always been pretty creative, so creativity is part of that. My sense of commitment to, over many years, to just kind of be the worker bee, you know? I don't, I'm not really good at self-promotion, I don't, I'm not slick, I don't do that kind of thing, but I, I don't mind just like getting things done. And I guess that's, I'll go through this process so that I can get to the other thing and just do things, you know? But I think also the ability to listen to all sides of an issue objectively, try to analyze it as carefully as I can. And I want to anticipate how decisions affect all aspects of the Iowa City community and life and how things play out long-term, I think, and not just the short-term, because that's key in the decision-making process to make sure that things are sustainable and good long-term. Everything's connected, you know, and that's kind of what I come back around to. We need to spend more time looking at things holistically to have better outcomes, and this includes bringing as many people into the discussion as possible as well.
Thank you so much. Everybody give Anne a hand? All right, Ryan.
Good evening.
How are you doing?
Oh, man, I'm doing super well. I just started all my classes today and...
How'd it go?
Great. My professors are phenomenal, my classmates are superb, and I'm pleasantly exhausted.
I hope that's the same answer at the end of the semester.
Oh, it will be.
Good. Well, because time is short...
Yes, let's get right into it.
...hasten to it. What two values have been the best parts of your life? What are the two real kind of guiding pole stars for you as you've developed and emerged?
Right, and I'll dissect it too, because I think it's, for me, it's both gratitude and justice. Where I learned a lot of gratitude from my mother, who would smile or laugh in anyone's direction. She would want an interaction, sort of, just any sort of positive event to happen with any stranger she would meet. And from this, my dad was big into theater when he was younger and I think has been hardened by a very cruel economy. And I, so I gained a lot of resilience from my father and a lot of gratitude from my mother, where it shows up as this sort of comedic spirit, where I'm extroverted to a fault, where my room is in complete disarray, but I think my community is in better order. But I gain that gratitude from, you know, how I was raised and how I interacted with my community. And I get the justice piece from the work that I had done in AmeriCorps for several years, where I worked at a school-to-prison pipeline in Columbus, Ohio, where in the Rust Belt in the Midwest and all throughout the Midwest, all throughout this country, you know, rampant segregation and wealth and income inequality provides very few white privileged communities to be able to be afforded an education and an opportunity. Meanwhile, our hauntings of slavery, of genocide, of the most evil parts of our American history still play out in our school-to-prison pipelines. So I know that nearly half the students I worked with would not go on to graduate. Meanwhile, one school district over, nearly every kid graduated in suburban school. So my deep commitment to gratitude has also roots in AmeriCorps, where while we were in these schools, we needed to lift each other up because we are in some of the most really disappointing and depressing situations, where we're putting our time and talent on the line to help our most vulnerable members of our, of our communities. And so lifting each other up during these dark times is crucial, but also having an eye towards justice about how do we change these broken systems? Because these broken systems still play out. Columbus, Ohio is not unique. We still see our school district here encounter a lot of segregation, a lot of inequality, and there's still, those guiding principles are still paramount to my campaign and to how I really want to carry myself in, in this whole campaign.
What are you most grateful for when it comes to living in Iowa City?
I'm grateful that I'm seeing so many familiar faces.
You can see anybody through these lights?
Well...
That's great.
I used to dance for like seven years, so I got used to the stage lights. But yeah, I mean, I see just the glow, maybe your auras are coming off or something, but the collective aura in here is like beautiful, y'all, you should give it up for yourselves. But what I really am most grateful about the Iowa City community is that, I mean, for like material reasons, I don't need a vehicle. I haven't owned one in like seven years, so I'm able to walk and bike everywhere and like blessed be I have a new bike. Shout out to the bike library. My, my old bike got yanked that I, I rode across the country a couple of years back. But yeah, I'm most grateful for the sense of community that is here and that I've found throughout Iowa. Like, we are a people that want to stick up for one another, but not, we don't always have the knowledge and the tools to do so. And so if we're better equipped as a community to stand up for one another, then I think that we can build that sort of vision, that sort of community that we all wish to see but find it so hard to do with every obstacle and barrier that we come across.
So how does that translate? How does your work in Ohio and just your background in general really translate to what your vision for Iowa City is?
Yeah, because I see this tired pattern of not knowing your neighbor. I grew up in suburban Detroit where we built the automobile, but we did not build community along the way. We built barriers between ones, between each other, whether it be white picket fences or drive-in garages. We just could not, we didn't have the infrastructure to have a community that was cohesive. And so having that play out in the suburbs where I grew up, having that play out in the old industrial town that I went to, I went to the Small Liver Arts School for a year and I couldn't afford to, that's what threw me into AmeriCorps. And when I kept serving in different communities, I was, I kept finding the same thing, these savage inequalities happening. And it kept happening in Columbus, in Colorado, in Decorah, seeing this class and race divide. And then it just sort of materialized most when I traveled through Cannonball in North Dakota during the Dakota Access Pipeline fight. And I learned a lot about how, this was the most amazing, incredible gathering of indigenous tribes, of allies, of accomplices that are trying to overthrow this system. But I saw the poverty, the conflict, the terrorism, the state-issued terrorism, having water cannons and rubber bullets being shot on water protectors. It was the same bullets that were flown in Columbus towards my students by either one another or by the police, and it's the same ones that we still see play out in national media. We have violent realities because we have a violent past. And once we deal with that violence and incorporate compassion, nonviolence, anti-racism, we can really bring about a more peaceful, harmonious world. But there are too many looming evils in our world, and we see them even play out in Iowa City. We're not immune to it regardless of what kind of bubble we live in, because we're not a bubble. What I see across the country and what I see here is the same structures of a broken system that treats us poorly, and in particular, some groups much more poorly than others. I am a privileged person because I, I carry white skin, I have freckles, I'm a male appearing person, and I'm able-bodied. But for folks who do not carry these identities, this world is cruel, and it makes it much harder to achieve that sort of equitable future when this world sort of continues to break us down.
So with all of that going on in the world, what, can you give like just one or two things in particular in Iowa City that you think that gratitude in particular, as you embody it, would really help to amend?
Yeah, so something I learned last year during my studies was that on the outskirts... Yeah. So something I learned last year during my studies was that, on the outskirts of Iowa City proper, there are several trailer courts and neighborhoods that are on private wells. And well water in Iowa is, eh, you know, that's why we don't drink it here in Iowa City, but it's contaminated. So we have people within our, either within or right on the border of our city lines that are either drinking contaminated water or have to pay out of pocket to provide for safe, clean drinking water. And the city is looking at an annexation policy to bring in certain neighborhoods on those margins to the city proper, so that we can provide city services that they deserve, and to bring them into a school district that they're either having to go to county schools, or they're having to not integrate into our current system. So I think one tangible thing that the city could do is to annex the neighborhoods on the margins so that we can provide for the city services. One issue is, and one question I will raise to you all later is like, is how are we going to provide the sort of revenue to make that justice piece work? Because, you know, there is an anti-taxation rhetoric that has taken grip by Grover Norquist and the likes of the hyper-conservative leaders. But if we don't provide what means we do have, we have means, but if we look to the folks who don't have transportation or clean water right on our margins, if we neglect that in the name of saving our tax money, it seems like a really gross way of perpetuating classism, racism, and all the other things. So I think the annexation policy that the city council is now looking at is really crucial to bringing about that more equitable and just future for all of our residents.
And then really quick, just as a final question, how do you think your core character and the values that you've grown up with and really started to live through, how do you think that character will really help to bring that kind of vision for justice
Because I think with my lived experience in service and in this community, I've either knocked on your door, or I've shook in your hand, or I've tried to meet you with where you're at. And I'm going to continue doing that, even regardless of the results of this primary and this election, because I have a commitment to other people. Because I recognize that the world has provided more than enough for me. Although it's been cruel in a recession sort of way, I mean, Michigan really went through it during 2008 and '09. But I'm still here in good spirits, drinking good spirits with some amazing people. And I think the character of extroversion, of meeting people with where they're at, of trying to also use my platform to elevate the most pressing issues in our community, is really going to make me stand out from the rest on council and the rest in the field, although we have some incredible options to choose from. And so I encourage you, ask the hard questions, come up with creative solutions, and encourage people to talk about those solutions. Because we can talk amongst each other and, you know, try to find where we are different. But if we come across, if we come out of this without any tangible solutions that any one of us could bring to city council come October, then we did this campaign wrong. And I don't want to do this campaign wrong, because there are so many things that need to be addressed, like housing, like transportation, like climate, like wages. There are so many things we need to address that we can, but we need to be solutions and action-oriented. And that's why I think that I may stand out. I'm also trying to be humble too. But it's the end of Leo season, and I am such a ham. I won't get too much into it, but.
Tough dance, man. It's a tough dance. Thank you. Give him a hand. Hi, Christine.
Hi, Dan.
How are you?
I'm good. I'm gonna scooch forward. There we are.
There you go.
There we are.
All right. Is there anything that you'd like to say before I start diving into questions? Are you ready to just dive in?
Let's just do this.
All right. All right. So what values do you think have really guided the best decisions that you've ever made?
So, so are we skipping? Skipping ahead?
That's number one, two values. That's it.
I swore I was, two values. Okay, two values. I find these things so incredibly challenging, right? Because we're, as humans, so exceptionally complicated. So I dig in, and Dan sends us these questions. And I think what rises to the top? Because the reality is that we all, we possess, we contain multitudes. And the thing that I kept circling back to was perspective, from one sense, my ability to, with integrity, look at a situation and see it for all that it is, not necessarily just my place within it. And, you know, it's a thing that was hard fought, but I think it ties really closely to that integrity issue. So I'm counting that as one.
Perspective slash integrity.
That's right. Thank you. And the other one is just compassion. I mean, deep caring for the people in my community. I have a problematically giant heart that I think I care deeply about the people in my life and about the people in my community, and I give wherever they're willing to take.
So can you give an anecdote or a moment where one or the other, or preferably both, has emerged?
Yeah. Has emerged. I think, in reality, I find, time and again, that I am really just a product of my story. And in terms of how...
Is there an event in that story that really?
Yeah. I mean, maybe there is. Maybe there are a couple of events in that story that, I think, I, kind of as Ryan said, and I'll address this with just complete candor. I mean, I have privilege coming out of my ears, right? In so many ways, I, just the happenstance of my, of my birth as a white woman in the United States in this century, I'm relatively able-bodied, I'm cisgendered, I'm straight, I have a job, I have health insurance. I mean, it's really hard to pretend like there's, with my life, that there's a thing that I need to fix with that, right? But the reality is, and the thing that I think that the credit that we give to ourselves, or that we often deny ourselves, is where we came from. And there have been several fairly big traumatic events that I feel like changed me. When I was, when I was in law school, my brother went to prison, you know? And I'm in a critical race theory class talking about absent patriarchs. And I'm holding back tears, trying to participate in a discussion, because my brother is an absent patriarch. And seeing that tiny window into, into a community where that is rampant, where because of, because of the way policing happens, and because of the way, because of implicit bias and things that are everywhere all the time, I get this tiny little window into what that community looks like. It's not first person, right? I didn't live that experience. I lived it through my brother. But it was real. And, you know, seeing that and knowing that that's every day for folks. And that's every day for a lot of folks. And, you know, that's one of them. And my, we all, our time on this planet is really short, right? My father died really suddenly a few years ago, totally healthy. He just died one day. And over the last few years after that, I just kept losing people. Some of them, it made sense, you know? Grandmas are supposed to die. Grandmas are supposed to die in their 90s. It's too bad that they had to die in their 90s, two weeks apart from each other. But, you know, about a year after that, my brother was in a car accident, and he froze to death. And these are things that don't happen. And I say these things with just such complete honesty and also realization that the reason I am who I am is because of all of this. It's all of the things in my life that have been easy, that maybe I earned and maybe I didn't. Some of them I worked for, and some of them I was just gifted, and I recognize that. And I recognize that candidly, even though my friend Sarah likes to remind me that I did work hard, and that some things I wasn't just gifted, I really did work super-duper hard for. But also that every time something awful happens in my life and in the world, I remember what matters. And it always comes down to the people. It's never anything but the people. It's always the people in my life that matter.
So how, when you're looking at serving on city council, in terms of the people that matter, and in terms of making Iowa City at large, the people that you'll never meet, the people that you see every day, making sure that everybody matters, how do you see that vision translating from what you just said into serving on council?
Absolutely. I think because, because of this heart that cares about the people in my community. I've been giving to my people for a really long time, and that's a fundamentally different thing than saying I want to give to everybody in the community. And I think it's really selfish to only give to my people. And in terms of translated, I mean, I'm a listener. It's what I do. I love to talk. But the reality is, I can shut my mouth. And I just want to hear your stories, because ultimately, the only thing that we are is, we are our experiences. And I can't understand you, and I can't understand what you need and what the solutions that work for you are unless I ask you. And that's when I think, you know, when I think about engaging folks who aren't able to really meaningfully participate in city government. I told myself I wasn't going to circle this back, and I was going to have this really authentic conversation just about character. But I am going to briefly circle to it as it applies to city government. We talk about, we have open meetings, right? Our community is permitted, obviously, to come to their work sessions and come to our council meetings. But when it really comes down to it, who is able to come, right? The folks who have access to the downtown, the folks who know what's happening because they're looped into the information community, and the folks who are working for shift jobs. So we're functionally, because of the way, because of the way we do business, which, for what it's worth, it's the way most people are doing business. It's not like, it's not like our city council's doing something wrong. But I do think that there are ways that we can better engage the rest of the community. And I'll use that, watch me circle this back around, use that desire to care for those folks and that compassion and that listening to, to hopefully create solutions that work for everybody, not just for people like me.
So how specifically or concretely do you think that improved communication or improved, like, access to communication or two-way communication, like, how do you think that that can actually concretely be done through your work in city council?
Ask that question again.
So you're one human being.
Yeah, I sure am.
Like, concretely, how do you think that you can really improve that kind of access and communication and things like that?
Yeah. I mean, if there's anything I've learned in deciding, you know, with five minutes' notice to run for city council with a full-time job and a family, it's that each one human being has a network, and we have people. And we're not really just ourselves, we're also our community. Same thing with city council, right? The city council is council, and it's a collection of members, but it's also commissions, it's also boards, it's also outreach groups. There are ways to create, to allow an idea to spread within a community, because we thoughtfully engage different people. Maybe it's a subgroup, maybe it's some folks who are out there at listening posts or having off-site satellite meetings. I don't know the answer necessarily, but I think, I think it's certainly possible to inflict my values of listening and of getting out there and asking for that outreach and getting folks on board to do it with me.
And so that would be the aspect of your core character that you think can really bring this into being? We're coming back to question five.
Yeah. I am not a preparer. I'm more of a chit-chatter. So, yeah, I mean, ultimately, it's connecting to people, right? How many of you have taken this, well, I'm not even going to ask for a round of hands, who am I? The StrengthsFinder test, which we just, I just gave at my work to some folks. And I was kind of dumbfounded the first time I heard that mine are input and winning over others. Well, and then as I, as I think about it really holistically, it's input because I ask questions, right? This is what I do all the time. If you come in and you tell me a thing that you want, or what, something else, I say, why? Just ask my kid over there, who's rubbing her eyes. And, you know, it's always why. I want to know more about the how and the why of the situation. And I don't win people over because I'm smooth, because I'm very much not smooth, but it's because I care about them. And those two things, they're intimately tied together. And I see that as being part of being someone in a community who people feel comfortable approaching. And because I am deeply humble, and I know what I don't know, and also experienced enough to know that I do know an awful lot, you know, I'm here to be a brainstorming person, to listen and to bounce ideas off of people, too.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
You can applaud.
Please clap.
All right, Bruce. It's your turn.
Hello.
How are you doing?
Awesome and amazing. How are you?
Doing all right. What was your favorite part of today?
Part of today?
Yeah, the best part of today.
Was the anxiety of coming to meet you people. Yes. But I, you know, I'm very fortunate to actually be up here, and I don't take it lightly. So thank all of you for coming out and being a part of this. And thank you for putting this on.
Yeah. What two values have been the most influential in guiding your best decisions throughout your life?
I'm very empathetic. And actually, when I talk about empathy, my work that I do on a day-to-day basis, it actually speaks to who I am as a person. One of the things that I love to do is serve others. And I know if you're hearing a black guy say he likes to serve others, you know, that that can have a negative connotation for some. But I believe that I am a servant for other people. And so my job, I work for Carang Hazamore, I opened it and own it and all that other good stuff. I get to work with seniors. I get to work with mental health and disabled individuals. I get to work with hospice. I think you all may have heard of the Bird House. So we staff the Bird House, which is the hospice house. I also get to work with the crisis beds. We have three crisis beds. And if you've heard about the access center that's going to be coming, where there's going to be different types of services for our community. So currently, we have the community-based crisis beds, and we have three crisis beds, where people come for five days and we help them figure out their next, whatever steps in their life. We also do cleaning for a reason, which is, we get free cleaning to women who undergo cancer treatment. And then also provide backup childcare to university staff and faculty that really can't miss work, and their child has a slight little temperature, and we go in and provide them care. So I am so fortunate that within my work, I get to do, and, you know, not only through myself, but there's 83 people that I employ. And so I get to actually impact this community. And I'm very fortunate to be a part of that.
So empathy would be one value. What would be the second one that you think really has guided the decisions that you've made in your life?
Positivity. So anytime someone asks me how I'm doing, I always say I'm awesome and amazing.
You didn't say that when I asked you. I mean, that's on record, man. I hate to break it to you.
Yeah. I'll tell you what happened. I've always been a very, very happy person. And so started business, and at the age of 27 is when I started my business. And I never really believed in depression, even though I had a psych degree from the university. I just didn't believe it. I was a happy person. And so I found myself in my basement for about 10 days. I give it up to the crisis center. If you all would take a minute and just give it up to the crisis center and the services that they do. I literally was in my basement. I called my next-door neighbor, Mike Lensing. I said, you can have the house, I want to sell it. And I also called another lady who owned a home care agency, and I said, I want to get rid of it all. I found myself in this huge state of depression. But when I came out of that depression, it was because of people like the crisis center, people in this community that came downstairs in the basement and was just with me. And when I came out, I began to say, I am awesome and amazing. And for me, when I say it, the I am, for me personally, is God's name. So I am in me, the God in me is awesome, and I'm amazed by it. And so whenever I go through any type of situation, no matter how hard it is, I am awesome and amazing. And for every trouble, there is a solution. And so that's what guides me.
So in terms of looking at both empathy and positivity, then, how does that relate to your vision for Iowa City? And what do you think you can do as part of city council that will help those values be kind of installed into the character of this town?
So I'll tell you that a really good friend of mine introduced to me the Human Rights City. He's in this room, I won't point him out. But the Human Rights City really goes into, if you can imagine, a city where all individuals have input into making the community non-discriminatory, everyone is equal, and participated in daily activities where it's all based in human rights framework. So imagine if Iowa City, we had a society where people felt safe, there was access to clean water and food and housing, education, healthcare, and livable wages. So Human Rights Cities, it goes like this. Typically, what we have now is that, you know, Typically, what we have now is that, you know, city council gets a budget brought to them and they have to operate by those line items. Well, a Human Rights City say, "Don't bring me anything, don't bring me the budget, I'm going to find out what the needs of the people are and then we're going to work on the needs of the people and we're going to create a budget." What happens when you actually create a budget based on the needs of the people, then, so it might be this large, the needs of the people, but what you'll find is that all those other line items that was for ambulance services and healthcare services and, you know, even downtown where neighborhoods are unsafe and you have to employ more police officers just to keep the neighborhood safe. What's going to happen, if you began to meet the needs of the people, all those other services will eventually financially go down. And so Human Rights City is something that I'm going to be talking about more and really engage in people and dialogue about what that really means.
Okay. And how do you think that your empathy and your positivity really come together to make you the best possible advocate for becoming a Human Rights City?
Well, I think, when I think of myself, I just know that I'm a very honest person, for one. And growing up, my siblings would say, and my mom would know, if she wanted the truth, go find me. Because she'd say, "Brucey, raise your right hand to God and I can't do it until I lie." I mean, that was just what I did, it was something about that, I don't know. So I think that my convictions and the core of me is to serve others. And so being authentic and what I really like to do is bring people to the table because when you actually bring people to the table and began to have them to talk, no matter if they're yes and nos, the more they talk, you'll hear someone say, "Well, I wouldn't have been so mad if they had done this and I wouldn't have been so upset if they had done this." Well, what's happening, when you're getting people at the table and they're engaging, is that where they began at yes and nos, you know, different parts of the world, now we can have some, something to work with and talk on and come to an agreement. And so I really believe that having the voices at the table, the yes and the nos at the table is critical and I want to be a part of that.
All right. Everybody give Bruce a hand. Thank you. You're up.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
My on?
You are.
Yeah, it's been a crazy week and this is, this is a tough crowd to go after, I'll tell you that. Yes, it's been a crazy journey, quick turnaround and, you know, talking to the community about what's important to you. Probably most of us here, maybe minus Ryan, didn't plan to run. And obviously, Ryan didn't plan to run this suddenly either because the seat came up. So suddenly, you know, all of us are somewhat flying by the seat of our pants, but I think what we all do share is a deep commitment to understanding what is important to our neighborhoods and how we move this city forward. So, you know, I think we all have full-time jobs and families and such. I know for us, I'm the executive director of Old Brick Downtown, we just kicked off a $60,000 historic renovation project last week. So that has been a little overwhelming managing that on top of, you know, lots of questionnaires and our families and schools starting back this week for, I have three children in the school district. But that's been exciting, you know, it's an exciting process and kind of the history of why I jumped in the race is a friend called me, she knew that I had been interested in politics and I had actually run for school board three years ago and she said, you know, "This is, this race is open, would you do it?" And my initial reaction was, "No, I'm too busy and now is not the right time." And then I just paused and I said to myself, "I cannot believe I just said that because that's what every woman says that keeps women out of politics traditionally because we feel obligated, you know, to our families." And I'm a big advocate of women sitting at the table and being on councils and having strong voices in their communities. I think women just bring something a little different to the table and I think that's not to disparage men in any way, I just think it adds to the conversation when women's traditional values or non-traditional values, when women sit at the table. So that ties into the first question, I'll just pop right in to my two values. The two values, soon as I read that question, the two values that popped up immediately for me were education and democracy. And I think that pretty much stems from my story, kind of as Christine mentioned. You know, my story is, I grew up overseas, although I was born in Alabama, which you might can hear a teeny bit of. When I was four, my dad went and worked overseas in Saudi Arabia and I spent virtually my whole childhood there in a very different culture, as you can imagine, a very not women-friendly culture, I'll put it in that terms. So that really inspired me in some ways about women being at the table and further about citizens, people being citizens of their government and having votes in their government. Because places like Saudi Arabia, I think many, many of us lose sight of the privilege of being Americans and the privilege of voting. And even women who haven't even been voting that long, you know, we give up that right when we stay home on days of elections. And so when my friend asked me and I said, "No," I said, "Oh, my gosh, what was I thinking?" I was like, "No, just forget what I just said, my answer is yes. Today is the right day." Even though I hold a full-time job and I have three children and I recently had a son that passed away from cancer and we're new into that recent grief process and we have a lot going on and a lot of things that we're interested in doing, I just said, "Today is the right day." And I'll figure out the rest as I go and I'll start by opening the conversation to our neighbors and just appreciating that every neighborhood is not the same as your neighborhood and that every neighborhood has different needs and different things that they need. And I think when we realize that, for instance, there's hungry children in our district, you know, lots of, lots of people don't even understand that and don't even appreciate that. And working with things like Meals on Wheels, when you go to people's homes, these are not always elderly people either, you know, I think there's a perception that these are all, you know, elderly people and they're not. And when you go into their homes and they invite you in because you have brought them potentially their only meal of the day, or the day that you feel, you fill a backpack with food for a student to take home because he or she may not eat the rest of the weekend without that food, that changes who you are and that changes your priorities. And myself, as a mother, you know, we have four children, two of those are girls. So I think that circles back about why I feel strongly, particularly for myself, to sit up here and represent our city and one day, you know, move forward in different directions and to be a strong woman and to be an active participant, an active citizen, voting and to show my children why that's important and to impress upon them how the value and the privilege we have as Americans and as people in Iowa City. And that's kind of like the 30,000 view, that's not necessarily just Iowa City, but one of the things I always do is I never vote on election day. I almost always vote early at the Johnson County Auditor's Office and I do that for a very particular reason, because I pick my children up from school and I take them with me. Because I want to train them how to be a responsible citizen. And I want them to understand why I vote, who I vote for, and the reasons I've picked those people. And I think training our future citizens, you know, is that through education or is that through civic involvement is a large part of why I'm here.
So is there one real standout moment in particular where those two values became anchored, either through their absence or through their presence? Or did you have a positive example of that or was it just growing up in Saudi Arabia?
Well, I think definitely growing up in Saudi Arabia. You know, even further in my history, particularly why education is super important to me and I think why that's important to Iowa City, is educating our kids is our future. I mean, I think we could probably all agree with that. And I think as we see funding from the state decrease for state budgets, for city budgets, for school budgets, we are in a real crunch and we have to make tough choices. And when you look at the budget side of any budget, city council, school district, you have to start making tough choices. And I think you need smart people, you need people who have been in these different circles, who've served on, you know, committees in your school district, who understand how your schools work. And people who've, you know, such as myself, I've been in the nonprofit world for, you know, essentially since I've moved here and even previous, before moving here. And just understanding how these communities tie together and how the school district and the nonprofits and the business community, how we all tie together and how we all live in these same circles and how decisions on one body affect how all of those bodies, you know, interact and how ultimately those interact with how our children, you know, grow up and how that changes the concentration of poverty and the people who have substantial needs. And, you know, are they left behind? Are we caring for them? And really, you know, you live out your priorities, you know, you say you fund your priorities and you have to walk the walk. You know, you fund what is important to you and you fund what the priorities are.
So in terms of your particular vision for Iowa City, what would you, like, really practically speaking, what are one or two things that you would want to fund that you currently don't see being funded?
Yeah. You know, I think affordable housing is critical, but I think I would even step back from housing to a more fundamental, and that is food. Food is not that, I'm not going to say housing is not fundamental, please don't quote me on that, it absolutely is. But I think when we sit back and understand food insecurity in our, in our community, in Iowa City and the state of Iowa, in the United States of America, the richest country in the world, in the history of the world, and if you truly understood what that looks like, I think we would start funding some of those priorities. So, you know, food is a huge deal, but, you know, actually, when I first read this question, my first take is, you know, ideally, what do you see Iowa City in the future? And I think almost in some ways, we can't answer that, right? Because we are constantly changing and who we are now culturally, socially, economically is not who we are in 10 years. You know, transportation's an issue now, but what about when autonomous cars appear? Or, you know, and this is obviously, you know, much kind of bigger picture, but, you know, the vision has to be not static, it has to be flexible because it has to change as our values change, as our populations change, as we become less white and more diverse and we welcome people that have different needs and come from different cultural backgrounds. And we have to flex with what their needs are. So I don't think we can say definitively, or I certainly don't feel like I can say definitively what, you know, Iowa City looks like in 10 years. I can tell you what, you know, I think we are growing pretty substantially, you know, around 8,000 people a year. You know, we don't hear about that as much because we're surrounded by other communities growing equally fast or faster, but Iowa City is growing substantially. So, you know, that puts pressures on our budget. You know, that likely leads to more needs for vulnerable populations and not less. But the flip side of that is a budget reality. If we don't grow our tax base, we cannot serve more people. So that's the balance of what I look at when a new program comes, excuse me, I look at, where is it on our priority sheet? Does it need to move into a different slot on the priority sheet and how is that funded? And where is that balance between them?
And so is that the kind of core part of your character, that kind of really pragmatic thing that you think would help to make food insecurity less of a problem in Johnson County and Iowa City in particular?
Yeah, and, you know, food insecurity is one problem. It stands out to me because I think it particularly hits vulnerable children and that's very hard for me as a mother particularly to see because, you know, there's a lot of blame and this and that about why people don't have money and, but, you know, erase all of that and that has nothing to do with this child here. They have no control over what choice is good, bad, or ugly their parent has made and that is what I just cannot accept. So that's, you know, one of my big signature issues and, you know, as I've thought about this campaign and what is important to me, there are so many things that we can address. But, you know, I really want to address issues that we can, that we can change here locally. There are a million needs, certainly statewide and nationally, you know, big picture things, but I think that's something we could really dedicate ourselves to and change substantially. But I think probably the thing I would say, most of my friends would say about me are probably two things, I want to steal a little Bruce's thunder. I am a very positive, happy person, but the flip side of that is I would say that I'm very resilient also, having been through difficult times. You know, what do you take from a difficult situation and what do you change and move forward? And can you take a different, difficult situation and make something positive come of that? And this is part of what this race is about for me. And this is something that my family and I are always struggling to change into, you know, the difficult things into positive experiences for us and how that affects our community.
Thank you. Give a hand to Brianna. How many of you just really appreciated hearing that from all five people? Thank you. That was really wonderful just to hear. I really appreciate you being here, so thank you very much. Now we come to our time where the candidates will pose questions and you, as part of the community, will provide answers. And just because we're on a somewhat of a time schedule, we're just going to do one at a time, if that's okay with you. And we'll divide up the time and go from there. So Anne, would you like to offer a question? And when the candidate asks a question, I have a microphone up here, just come on up and I will give you the mic and you can give your answer.
All right. My first question is, what do you enjoy most about Iowa City and what city policies do you think help make that a reality?
Can you say that one more time?
What do you enjoy most about Iowa City? And what city policies do you think help to make that a reality? Or in the future, what could change to make that better? So talking about what you really like and value about Iowa City.
What I love best about Iowa City is its sense of history, which plays into the sense of place, which you've talked about in neighborhoods. And I think, you know, the older neighborhoods, which are old neighborhoods when I came to college here in '69, are still incredibly important to me and kind of where my heart sings. And city policy certainly is the historic preservation ordinances and how the city council supports that in making districts and landmarks and such. And one thing that has me greatly concerned is the downtown, which is sort of in a tussle between shall we be tall or shall we be short and historic? Can we be both? And there's questions of aesthetics and very abstract things about quality of life. And there's also questions about economics and such. So what makes me very happy about Iowa City and that I enjoy also is making me a little nervous.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there another answer?
I know you all love something. Yeah? All right.
All right, do you want to ask your second question?
Sure, sure. How do we make sure we have both strong neighborhoods and connectivity between them or among them?
I think it's a really, it's a challenge for us, but I think one way to make the neighborhoods more, feel more connected is to be really aware of what's happening in our public schools. And that means spending time in all of those schools and talking to the parents in those schools and understanding who makes up that school. Because for now, and as you know, the district's working on it, for now, we do have, we do have a disconnect. I mean, we'd like to say there are no bad schools in our district, that's true, but we definitely have schools with more barriers than others. And it's something that our board is working on. But as a city, it's really easy to understand what's happening in our neighborhoods by looking at our schools.
Thank you.
All right, is there another answer?
This partially has to do with the first question, too. This partially has to do with the first question too. Diversity, diversity is what I, why I stayed here after I came. I loved the diversity. I saw us make mistakes, what I considered mistakes in this city in terms of, in, in terms of maintaining, attaining diversity, keeping it. When we started to do low-income housing and I know some people on the commission and tried very hard to get that all around the city, spread it out, didn't happen, tended to go to, to single areas. And we lost what I consider tremendously important thing is our diversity throughout the city. I still think Iowa City is wonderful. It's a very diverse college town. Our college, our education system contribute to that in a positive way, but I think we've made some mistakes that had a decision in the wrong direction in terms of that, you know, important quality we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another answer? We have another answer.
I think contiguous walkability as well as a further focus on accessibility of our sidewalks for people that are not able to walk is one of those key components, as well as creative commercial opportunity outside of the downtown district. How can we focus on creating smaller corridors of commercial activity within each single neighborhood?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we have time for one more answer. All right. We'll go to our next question then. Go for it.
All right. I got a couple for you here, one at a time. How can our Iowa City Council promote anti-racism and non-violence? In other words, how do we strive towards that racial justice we always talk about?
I'm going to give people maybe 20 seconds to think on this one.
Please digest that. Let it marinate because it's important.
Do you want to ask your second question? Let people still think about the first question.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get back to the former. But I was, I was curious, maybe this is more pointed and more, you know, answerable that is related to the first, is what, what does the future of policing look like in our community? Does it, I won't give you any suggestions because I have some ideas, but what does community service look like or community or neighborhood policing look like? I'll leave it at that.
All right. Any answers? Did I ask some really hard questions?
People will think about them though.
So it's a little hard to actually sort of answer this since I am also privileged with having a white skin. But I think for kind of how I want to see community service and policing, it kind of comes, I think, really entirely focused on just, you know, talking and listening. De-escalation, don't go in with the idea that someone is going to do something horrible or that you're, that an officer goes in thinking their life is, you know, going to be on the line. So they don't just pull the gun. And that really comes from training and also I think, again, just listening. And that's how I feel, yeah.
Thank you. And our next answer.
So my answer is kind of a little bit related to hers, but I'd like to see, as somebody who works in a combination of retail and liquor distribution, but I, I'd like to see the city have an alternative to policing, which is I think what Ryan's getting at, where we have situations in retail where we don't want to have to call the police. At the same time, we're not able to de-escalate the situation ourselves. I'd like to see the city try to maybe experiment with an alternative to police that involves people who are trained to de-escalate the situation and it doesn't bring the same reaction that calling the cops to a retail location always ends up bringing. It's disruption for an hour and a half. I'd like to see us try to maybe, and I don't know what the solution to that is, but I'd like to see us have a community dialogue about what that could possibly look like.
Thank you. Is there another question or another answer? Here we go.
I'd like to go back to Ryan's first question. I think when we look at the city council and the strides over the years that they have made has been very positive, talking about a welcoming community, having a human rights commission, giving that human rights commission money to offer out as grants to organizations in the community and recently giving $500,000 for affordable housing to the Housing Trust Fund. I think these are very positive directions and I'm sure we have a lot more that we could do.
Thank you. I think we have time for one more answer, if there's one more answer.
So I actually worked with police officers as an intern with the Johnson County Attorney's Office and I want to say that they're doing a fantabulous job. Yes, I said fantastic and fabulous at the same time. But I also would like to point out that they aren't given many opportunities within the training programs that they're offered. They're expected to learn things about racism and bias and implicit bias in hours instead of months, weeks, years, lifetimes. I mean, we're not giving them the opportunity to succeed in the situations that they are placed in every single day. So I think, you know, you have to realize the situation that they're in. They're doing the best with what they're given in a way, but there's more that we as a community can do, sponsoring training programs at different places, you know, having organizations, you know, go into the police station and say, hey, we're offering anti-bias training today or we're offering, you know, some type of anti-racism training. Because they're put into all of these situations and not given the tools in a lot of instances or they're, you know, you're saying, hey, here's your one hour of training, use it, right? So if we can do more to give them the access to training and the access to, you know, the programs that we want them, we want to see in our community and we want to see, you know, put into place, that's what we need to be doing. It's not necessarily a problem, you know, with necessarily the police officers. It's an issue with, you know, the things that they are given in training and, you know, over the course of their experiences, you know. Experiences shape, like Christine said and Bree, Brianna?
Brianna.
Brianna said, experiences shape, you know, who we are and how we're made and, you know, what we bring to the table. If they're not given the experiences and if they're not given the training, how are they supposed to bring that to the table?
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. And with all of these two, if you want to leave your name and email address on the table in the back corner, right where you came in, you can leave your other answers and I will email them on to the candidates. So if you want to sign up for the Coffee with Dan email list, I won't sell it to anybody. It's totally okay. All right. Next question. Christine.
I'll start with what maybe is the harder of the two, but I'm not entirely certain. What are you personally willing to sacrifice in order to benefit the folks in our marginalized What are you personally willing to sacrifice to benefit the marginalized people in Iowa City?
We have an answer.
So sorry, I won't talk again, but this goes back to public schools. I think that this community, we were, we were spoiled. You got to expect to have your kid go to the same school, the one that was closest to you. And that's really not a practical or, a practical way to do public school. Public school's for everybody and you do what you have to do to make sure that all of the kids are getting the same quality experience and education in their school. So what I'm willing to do is you put my kid in whatever school, my three kids, in whatever school you need to put them in, and she knows that we're going to be moved at least twice. And that is fine because the most important thing is to get rid of these barriers to education. So put us wherever you want to, we'll get them there.
Thank you. Another answer.
I think historically, there's been a little bit too much emphasis put on the tax rate, the levy rate, particularly as it compares to Corvill and North Liberty. I'm certainly willing to pay a little bit more to do a little bit more. Realistically, if we get some big business that comes in and they're going to land in Iowa City or Corvill or North Liberty, they're going to get their taxes rebated anyway, you know, so it's not going to matter. I think a penny, I think it's about a penny generates something like 60 grand in the budget. You know, so sometimes you think, you know, my tax rate could go up one penny and that could, you know, that could almost buy a police officer. So you can do a lot of good things there for, for just a few cents. So I think there's been way too much emphasis on keeping that artificially low when a few cents might be able to do a lot of good.
I believe the buy a police officer meant hiring another police officer rather than anything else, so.
I might have to see if that works out.
Just to clarify, just to clarify. Is there another answer? What are you personally willing to do or to sacrifice for Iowa City? All right. Your second question?
Sure. And this, this goes back to my feeling about stories and something that Kimberly said at the Juneteenth Trailblazers Award, that your past doesn't happen to you, it happens for others. And as I was thinking about the questions that matter most, one, we, we're our stories and we all have those things that ultimately cause a fundamental shift. And I want to know what event or experience in your life, and it doesn't have to be intensely personal, I'm really open about those things, but I know that most people aren't and I really get that. What event or experience in your personal life most fundamentally shifted your worldview or your city view or your life view, but what matters to you?
Nice, easy softball questions.
I know, I know. I'll allow partial credit for, in, in your non-personal life, in life, in the witness Or you can write me these too.
All right. We have an answer.
So as a member of the LGBTQ community in Iowa City, my life has been fundamentally shifted a couple of different times where people react negatively to holding hands or kissing in public, things like that. And I think awareness in the community of just how diverse we are, but in different ways, not just through race, but through sexual orientation and identity, things like that that aren't necessarily visible. You know, some disabilities aren't visible, some, you know, impairments in other ways are not visible. I think pulling awareness to the things that aren't visible instead of always to the things that are visible, but also to the things that are visible could really help in this community because there is a lot of privilege within Iowa City in certain areas and there's a lot of not privilege in other areas. So being able to draw from those experiences and both positive and negative ones, you know, people smiling at you versus, you know, people, people spitting at your feet, you know, drawing on those experiences and taking from them things that you can teach to the community that you live in, I think are, are very important and kind of bring it back to schools, teaching things like that in schools and how to interact with different people. And going back to, you know, our diversity in our neighborhoods, if you're not living next to people who are different than you, you're not experiencing those things. And if you don't know people who are different than you, you know, you might have a negative reaction to them the first time you see them. So, you know, letting children be curious and asking questions and giving them really honest answers and also bringing that into our community as a whole, I think would be really valuable.
All right. And it looks like we have one other answer sneaking, two? Okay. Here we go.
I think drawing upon what the individual over there said, something that I'm very, very, or something that is near to me in my heart is disabilities and how disabilities affect people. Like people with disabilities are twice as likely to be unemployed and suffer from poverty. And that is an issue we really need, I mean, that needs some focus on in Iowa City. It, you know, can cause undue hardship for people and cause a whole load of problems. I mean, we talk about housing and we talk about food accessibility. If you don't have a job, you can't access adequate housing. And for me, I've been trying to build my art career, but that, I don't make much money from art, you know, and it's really hard. And when you have all these stressors, it can also affect negatively impact your relationships with people. And if you're trying to start a business, it also affects the way you interact with people. So I think definitely trying to address how we, you know, employ, like how we employ people and the choices that are made in terms of increasing access to people with disabilities, trying to provide more training. Someone mentioned like an hour worth of training for cops and police officers. Well, taking one CPR class, for, for example, something like with Systems Unlimited is not enough to feel comfortable doing CPR on a person who is choking or dealing with that. So not just providing training for people in various like community organizations and community nonprofits or cops, but also providing adequate training for people with disabilities so that they can develop the confidence that they need to be able to do a job, like, and also the confidence they need to be able to have a successful job interview. So that's common, I thought I'd throw out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last answer for this question.
I had promised I wouldn't say anything tonight, but here I am, so I apologize for that. I want to answer your question directly and I want to do this in a way that is hopefully inspires and doesn't sort of direct praise toward me or anybody else that I'm going to name here. What I would think of is going on the Civil Rights Tour organized by and conducted by Henry Harper this past June and profoundly supported by the Teamsters. About 50 people went on that tour. Rockne Cole was one, member of the city council. My wife, daughter and I were others and there were about 25 African-American kids on that bus with us and several African-American parents. And I can tell you what I managed to learn by being on that bus with them and walking around with them is a lot more about what it is like to grow up as an African-American kid, black kid, in this community. And that was profoundly moving for me. I wrote about it in a guest opinion. That's the kind of thing a city council person can do and you got to take advantage of that opportunity whenever it arises. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Bruce.
So early, earlier I talked about Iowa City becoming a human rights city is one of the ideas that I have, given all access to food, clean water, housing, education, healthcare and livable wages. So I mentioned, don't bring us a budget. We'll bring you the needs of the community and we'll create a budget. I wanted to know, does this resonate with anyone?
Do you want to show up hands or do you want to ask a more direct question of?
Yeah. Well, does it resonate with anyone and does anyone have any comments on the human rights city?
All right. If it resonates, why don't you, yeah, give it a round of applause. I think that's a yes.
Awesome. The next question that I would have is, what are some solutions for transportation that could alleviate the disadvantages it presents to individuals that rely on public transportation?
Anyone have insights into transportation?
I hate to also be somebody that gets up here twice, but I will say, as somebody who relies on either walking or biking to get wherever I go, I think anything that we as a city can do to incorporate transportation to, both in terms, both second and third shift, is I think a huge thing to do. Because if you got, if you get off work at 2:00 in the morning, your options are limited. The other thing I would say is that we need to try to be better connected to the other economic centers around us. We can, you know, as a student, I can get downtown from where I live, fine, but I can't necessarily get easily to North Liberty or Corvill without sectioning off a huge percentage of my time of the day that somebody who drives doesn't have to do. There's job opportunities that I could take in Corvill, North Liberty, that I can't, because of that lack of access to transportation. I think the route we're doing between Cedar Rapids and Iowa City is a fantastic start. I think anything that the city council can do to do more of that would be an excellent thing.
And we have another answer?
Hi there. I just want to second what was just talked about. In really practical terms, I would say, more stops, more often, longer. And I would say, it's not even a matter of going from North Liberty to Iowa City, it's going from the south side to somewhere other than downtown. And that actually goes from the north side to anywhere other than downtown. It's fantastic that we have this hub. However, as many of the candidates talked about, as you guys talked about, so much has changed in the past 20 years in a really positive way. We are more diverse, we are bigger, we've grown a lot. And so the center of Iowa City may visually and in many ways be symbolically downtown, but there is so much more than downtown, and people live their lives outside of downtown. When I was a student, I actually lived in University Heights, and I didn't have a car, I moved from New York City, and I was known as that girl who rode her bike down Benton, no, not Benton, I'm sorry, Melrose, and then Mormon Track to get to the fairway, and then huffed all my stuff back up that hill. I'm like swearing, people are swerving. So anyway, that was long ago, it was fun when I was in my twenties. Kinda, right? For people who aren't students, there are more families who are having to, have no transportation, having to rely on public systems. I live on the southeast side of town now, and we're not a food desert, but in the same way, if somebody has to huff their stuff, full week's worth of groceries, or only a couple days' worth, but it's for a full family, and they're doing it from the waterfront Hy-Vee over to, say, Broadway, or where have you, it's like, it doesn't really help that a bus comes once an hour. I mean, just to stop babbling about it, but it's just, there needs to be more opportunities later, and include in that some express buses. So it's like, all right, let's do a straight shot from the south side to the north side, or from the west side to the east side, and points in between, but these sort of, having to get off, and it's frustrating to have our bus system mimic what it's like to fly out of Cedar Rapids.
And one more answer.
I've always thought it was bizarre that the entire county doesn't have a transportation system. And also, I think our town itself needs to have a more coherent, where do people want to go, rather than, we'll take you downtown, and then you can go someplace else. My third point about buses is that the hub is downtown, yet there we have this transportation center where the Trailways Bus comes, but that's, not all the buses go there, and it's not a center, and we lost Megabus. It's, I want some logic to this. Also Sundays, we have fests going on downtown, you can't get from the rest of the town. Now, some of you all know that I actually am a bicyclist, I bicycle year-round. I am looking forward to the five-year plan that the city has set out for improvements, four-to-three lane conversions on the major roads, dedicated bike lanes, additional trails. I hope that all y'all will think about that, because that's also part of being a livable community, is being able to be where you are, enjoy your neighbors, enjoy their surroundings, rather than just rush, rush, rush in our little steel boxes. And I have a car, I drive at distances, I don't drive locally. So, and I'm not the only one.
Thank you. Brianna?
My question may sound pretty simple on the, when you think about it, but I think it's really kind of much more complicated and nuanced. The question is, what is your neighborhood's biggest challenge? And I ask that because I think that is an acknowledgement that we live in different neighborhoods in Iowa City, and what you feel is your neighborhood's challenge has nothing to do potentially with what another neighborhood's challenges are. So I think that's, you know, acknowledgement that we are very different, and just opening up the conversation of what neighborhood you live in, and what are you guys struggling with?
Go ahead.
I think, once again, like, maybe some of the social awkwardness, like, I think the closest possible neighborhood, they hold a lot of, like, community events, is the Longfellow Neighborhood, like, they have these porch, like, the porch festival, and all these really cool things going on, but, and then a lot of neighborhoods, I mean, I don't know exactly, because my neighborhood is really mixed. There's a lot of college students, I think Andre Perry lives across the street from me, just recently moved in, and it's like, there's all these diverse neighborhoods, but like, how do we build even a sense of community even within those neighborhoods? Like, because I know a couple people live around where I live, but it's like, the awkwardness of trying to reach out and maybe building a sense of community within those neighborhoods, where people can hang out, have potlucks, and that sort of thing. So how do we build, kind of nurture those kinds of relationships across neighborhoods and within neighborhoods?
So where I live is pretty much just apartments where you have the college students come in and then they leave. And so it really doesn't even feel like a neighborhood, it just feels like a temporary rest stop, in a way. And part of that's probably on me, because that's where I live, because the rent is somewhat cheap. But it's also, in a way, I'm just bringing it forward, because I don't know if there is a way we can do that, because we have this dual sort of identity of the town, of it being a town, but also a college town. And that's just, is it something that we just have to deal with? Is that there's just going to be certain areas where that's going to be where the college students are, so they're going to go, and they're going to have classes, and then they're going to go out and do things on the weekends, and then they'll leave for the summer, and then go somewhere else, and then you have all these new people come in. And I guess it's just really hard. It's something I've thought about, too, because it feels weird not knowing the people that live around you.
You have another answer?
All right, guys, three P, my first time here. So I live in the Lucas Farms neighborhood, and I'm young, just purchased a house, and we actually had somebody come knock on our door. And I was super surprised, I was like, I had no idea that this was even the Lucas Farms neighborhood, A, and B, I didn't know that there was like a Facebook group where they had events and all that stuff. And so I think, you know, if there's somebody willing to, from each of these neighborhoods, like, get together on some type of, like, community board, where you say, like, hey, we're doing this type of event, you know, maybe you could do that in your neighborhood. Or even in, like, an apartment complex, like, having somebody that's like, like you do in the dorms, I mean, it's like, kind of sounds stupid, but like, hey, let's plan a party for our floor, and like, do something.
Like the RA.
Yeah, right? So you can, you know, get those people involved. But I didn't even know that was a part of the community, because I lived across from the law school parking lot, and, you know, all it was, was tailgate. That's all I saw anywhere in my neighborhood, I had no connection. Same thing with turnover and all that stuff, and it was just a place to live for three years, and then kind of move on. But I think that if there are people in the community who are staying in those locations, and that's like their permanent home, if they're willing to step up and, you know, we create some type of community board, where it's like, how do I want to organize my community? I want to go to this meeting and see what other people are doing, and then take that back to my community and see if I can implement it.
Yeah, I just want to say something that is in a completely different direction, but I think the biggest challenge to every neighborhood actually is climate change. And I haven't heard a lot about the environment and sustainability issues this evening, and though I know the city does have initiatives and committees and all kinds of stuff going on, but there are so many things we could do as a city that seem small, I've sort of lost faith in the federal government to make change regarding climate change, but the city has just given us all the most gigantic garbage cans I've ever seen. And I think that we, I think that it would be just fine to have the organic picked up once a week, and the other two picked up every other week, and cut down on those belching garbage trucks. But then that makes me worry, because I don't want to lay off any garbage collectors either, so, but I, nothing else really matters if we don't tackle the climate change issue, and I think it's up to local government to do that.
Anyone else? Yeah?
Hello. I just wanted to say that I just recently became the contact for my neighborhood association, which is the Morningside Glendale Association. And for people who don't know, the city of Iowa City actually does have a pretty well-established neighborhood association, and each neighborhood does have its own boundaries and is defined, and for the most part, can have neighborhood contact. And the city does have meetings, and like, I just joined, so we've had like, I think, three this year, so maybe like four, five meetings a year. And they, the city actually funds neighborhood associations, provides funds for neighborhoods to have whatever kind of function that you want to have, whether you want to have a party, or, you know, you just, it's a neighborhood block grant, I don't know if it's a grant, but it, so maybe from a council perspective, it's just more of communicating that and getting it out a little bit more. So, just wanted to add that. Thanks.
And if you're going to ask your last question?
Sure. Again, it sounds simple, but I think this is really important as we connect people to their representatives, those of us and those of you that make policy, is, do you know a council member? Could you approach him or her? And if not, what could the council do to connect with the public more? And I think this is just really critical, because if you don't feel like you have access to the people who are making the rules, the policies, the regulations, how are you participating in the government? And how are you participating in your city?
All right, can there be a show of hands if you know at least one part of, one person on city council? And keep them up if you know how to get ahold of that person. Keep them up if you have done that. Keep them up or raise them anew if you plan on doing that after tonight. Does that answer your?
Yeah, I mean, I just meant, I mean, we're obviously a more typically engaged public, because we're here hearing our thoughts. But it's really just a question to keep in the back of your mind as you meet with neighbors. You know, when I told people I was planning to run for city council, I asked that, you know, of my friends and neighbors, can you name one person on city council? And they usually could not.
All right. Are there any final thoughts from any of you that you'd like to share in our waning moment of the first Coffee with Dan, colon, conversation with the candidates?
I was just happy that we touched on neighborhood associations, because I think that that's something that really, it kind of ebbs and flows, and people don't know that much about it. I think it's Marcia is the liaison that we have through the city. You know, I've heard rumors that her position after she retires someday might not be replaced, and I don't know if that's true or not, but I think that just having this conversation right now, and letting people in the community that make decisions know that you feel these neighborhood associations are important, can continue to have conversations so that that position in the future would not go away. Because I think it's important to creating Penn Grants and distributing those things. There are, you know, swing sets, or benches, or just little details in a neighborhood that make it more livable. And so I'm just happy that we talked about that, and someone brought it up, so.
Go ahead.
So one of the strategic plans for the city is inclusion, and so I believe that that's something that, it sounded like a lot of that was coming out tonight. And so I really do hope that the city will, the city council will continue to figure out ways to be creative in inclusion. Interesting enough, I was with my niece, she's 14 years old, she goes to Liberty High School, and one of the things that she talked about, which I was shocked about, is that in school, they don't really talk about race. And even though it's from her perspective, and I went to West High, is very segregated on some level, and what she said was, I want to talk about it, and people are afraid to talk about it. And the only way to really break that barrier is to have the conversations, and so I just wanted to make mention of that.
Other thoughts?
And piggybacking on that, because you're, I mean, that's absolutely it, and being open to what you don't know, and approaching a conversation with humility and saying, I want to talk about race, and I, maybe I don't have the language for it, or maybe I'm afraid I'm going to say something wrong, and leave your ego at the door when you enter those conversations, so you can actually learn something from them.
Anything else?
I'll just say that the, one of the closing comments about sort of a lack of dialogue around climate change, you know, it is the most pressing issue facing all of humanity. And if we don't get that piece right, then all that we're talking about and envisioning is all for naught. And I think that's why, you know, we're all really cognizant of it, none of us are climate deniers. Because we can't deny the reality that our climate is changing, and that we are not doing nearly enough. And so what we need is for y'all to hold us accountable, as candidates, as counselors, as elected officials, as community members, as neighbors. If we're not doing enough, we need to do more, and encourage each other to do more. And I, you know, as someone who just happens to be the youngest on this table, I'm adopting a mess. We are all in a mess. And that if we don't provide for our future generations, the folks who are not here yet, it's just more climate chaos for them. And so we need to do everything within our power to build community, to take action on climate, and to ensure that our future is bright for everyone that will inhabit it.
All right. Thank you. This has been an experiment and an event. I appreciate your attendance and your thoughtfulness and your answers and being present. How many of you enjoyed getting to know the candidates? Was this helpful to you? Good. All right. Thank you to The Mill and to City Channel 4. This will be broadcast out later throughout the week, so if you want to look at citychannel4.com, they'll have when this is out, if you want to re-watch yourselves, that'll be totally available to you. If you have other answers to the questions that the candidates raised, you can email me at coffeewithdanielb@gmail.com, or leave your email address in that corner table, the circle kind of by the door over there. Just leave your name and email address, and I can let you know how to get those questions on, and let you know of other events that I will be moderating. So, thank you very much, and we're going to turn the mill back over to The Mill and open mic with Jay Knight, who has graciously let us slide into that event. So, thank you very much for your attendance, and we'll hope to see you again.